All right, Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeals Subcommittee Hearing for April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The hearing of this subcommittee is being held remotely via the Zoom Webinar Event Platform. This meeting is also being recorded. In order to ensure the hearing of this board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the Public Notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Both board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the meeting as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chairman may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom Webinar Platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the ambassador sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select Yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connecting to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. Again, if you are connected by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the ambassador. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. We will take a quick roll call since this is a subcommittee hearing. Mr. Fortune?
Good my, good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening. Ms. Ms. Better?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening. So let's begin the meeting. So let's toss it to you, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for the five o'clock cases? If you can give me the address first, please.
Fifteen Mahin Street.
Thank you. For the record, calling DOA one two six one six four seven fifteen Mahin Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Marancy with the business address of three fifty West Broadway, South Boston. We're here today to ask for for a deferral, so to allow us to meet with the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council that has yet to happen. We're scheduled to meet with them on May eighteenth, and also we'd like to, a request to be heard in front of the full board as well, please.
In front of the full board, does that mean that it isn't, that it is not owner occupied?
Correct.
Okay. So may I have a motion for a deferral?
I'll make a motion for deferral.
My second.
I too am in support. The date for the full board?
Mr. Spitz, we're going to give you June seventh. We can't fit you in any sooner, so June seventh at eleven thirty.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Fourth Cherokee Street?
Thank you. For the record, sorry. Calling DOA one two eight nine four five four four Cherokee Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pulgeni, ten Forbes Road in Braintree. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're requesting a deferral and also we're, would like this to go to the full board. This is also not owner occupied. We have, we're having an updated refusal letter, which is still at ISD. The previous deferral, you guys granted was on March seventeenth, and it just came up so fast and things, as you guys know, sometimes are running slowly. So that's where we're at.
We'll make a motion for the twirl.
Hanses, do you have a second?
A second.
I too am in support. The date, please?
It will also be June seventh, Mr. Pulgeni.
Thank you, everybody.
Eleven thirty. Thank you, you too. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the five o'clock meeting?
Forty-seven, forty-eight Snow Hill Street, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you. Calling case DOA one two eight three two nine four forty-seven, forty-eight Snow Hill Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Echol with Drago in Toscano with the business address of eleven Beacon Street. We are seeking a deferral this evening. We were just brought on to this case and due to some turnover in the mayor's office and neighborhood services, we got a date quicker than expected here. We do still have two community groups to appear before in the north end. So we're seeking to have continued ongoing community process. So we would request a deferral to perhaps June to make sure we have enough time, your June Subcommittee, if that works for the board.
Mr. Echol, would it be beneficial to do July? After me with two boards and I don't know if they're meeting. June sixteenth, but we can also do July twenty-first.
We do have the meeting scheduled for the month of May, so if we could go with June.
I'll make a motion for the.
My second.
I too am in support. So the date, please?
The date will be June sixteenth at five P M.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Are there any other deferrals? Or withdrawals? Hearing none, I'll call the first case. Calling case DOA one two eight three four zero one oh two, one oh two High Street. This is to install a twelve by twelve roof deck over an existing first-floor roof. The violation is Article sixty-two, section twenty-five. Roof structure restrictions, a low roof, roof deck. Name an address for the record, please. Is concept building or somebody representing?
We do have two hands raised on the attendee section. Brian, are you here for this case? Just sent a request to unmute you. Brian Alim?
Yes, hello, Brian Alim, I'm the architect.
Please put your name and address on the record.
Okay.
Oh, Brian, you were, I think you might be muted. Hold on. Brian, can you unmute yourself? Hi, Brian, we can't hear you.
There we go. Okay, can you see me? Yeah. Hi. I think it's working now.
Name an address for the record, please?
Sure, one oh two High Street, Charleston, Mass. Brian Charles Alim, Inc.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed.
We're proposing a deck to be finished over an addition that's been placed on the house. It was current, it was previously HVAC mechanical, and the owner has since moved in and would like to have it finished as a deck.
And so was this addition done as a Friday? Did it come to this board?
Um, I believe there was a previous meeting of the board on the addition itself.
Okay. Can I ask, Tom, was there any provisos about no roof decks or anything on this, on the initial hearing?
Chair, I'm looking at a board decision from twenty twenty. It looks like there is not any provisos at all.
Okay. Okay, so please tell us about then this, this proposed deck, Brian.
Sure, yeah, there would be a new tracks deck on top with wrought iron rails around it. The egress is off the first floor. It, the current, below the deck is currently a mudroom and there's a patio in that back area. There's really only one neighbor view in the rear of the deck that faces his property, but there's a stockade fence that basically blocks the deck.
I'm sorry not to interrupt. Is this a single family?
It is.
Okay, how are the plans, Ms. Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
And is anybody here to either speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Not sure where the mayor's office is on, but I have no raised hands on my side.
Yeah, sorry about that. Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office and neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office would like to defer judgment to the board. I was just speaking with our Charleston liaison. Our office is unaware of any concerns. We haven't received any letters from opposition or letters of support. Thank you.
Ms. Ambassador, it looks like somebody sent us a note. Valerie, um, is it Valerie Brown?
Okay.
Can you just, because the, the notes don't go into the record, so we should just make sure.
Yeah, let me. Sorry about that. I got kicked off. I apologize. I got kicked off momentarily. Let me just check with Valerie.
No worries.
Valerie, I sent a request to unmute you. Were you looking to speak on this? Oh, there you go. Okay, I don't think, I don't think we have her.
Okay, and let's just see, I just lost it here. The BPDA recommends approval with design review. So can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review and that the relief is only granted for the roof deck.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set with that proviso?
Great, thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one two nine nine two nine seven one forty-nine H Street. This is a change of occupancy from a one to a two-family dwelling and proposed rear and vertical additions with rear and roof decks and renovate. The violation is Article sixty-eight, section twenty-nine, roof structure restrictions, Article sixty-eight, section thirty-three. Off-street parking and loading, off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, section eight, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-eight, section eight, the building height is excessive in feet. Article sixty-eight, section eight, the side yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-eight, section eight, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, do we have anyone on for this case? Can you raise your hand? Any raised hands at the moment?
You can come back to it, Madam Ambassador. We'll, we'll come back to it. Calling the next case, calling DOA one two eight seven eight two five fourteen Victoria Street. This is to extend an existing dormer to the exterior wall for stairway from second to third floor. Allow enough headroom to walk up and down the stairs. The violation is Article sixty-five, section nine, side yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Henrik Stramberg, co-owner of fourteen Victoria Street in Dorchester.
Tell us briefly what you're proposing to do.
So we have an existing dormer that's been there since the house was constructed, and the headroom of that dormer is too low to be decoded. So we want to increase the ceiling height so that we can walk safely up and down the stairs to the third floor.
And when was the building constructed?
It was eighteen ninety-three.
Okay, sorry, go, okay. And so it's a, is it a full, it's a full dormer?
Correct. Currently, it, it sits about four feet behind the plane of the of the westward stairway, and we're going to extend the front of the dormer to the plane of the house. So we're not expanding the actual footprint of the building.
Got it.
But it doesn't encroach on the, on the side yard setback.
Okay. How are the plans, Ms. Ms. Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the mayor's office and neighborhood services. Our office hosted in a butters meeting for the project on February seventh. Butters were in support, as well as the Columbia Seven Hill Civic Association and Unionity. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see.
I do have a raised hand. John, are you here for this? Would you like to give testimony on this?
Yes, my name is Jonathan Malek. I live at eighteen Victoria Street, two houses town from the applicants. And I'd like to say my unqualified support for the request. I took a tour of the house offered by the previous owners before the present owners moved in, and I'm six foot six tall, and I remember I almost had to bend double to go up from the second to the third floor. The proposal will not increase the footprint of the house. It will simply make it possible for the third floor to be used by anyone of any size. So my wife and I agree on this point.
Thank you.
That's pretty compelling from a six-foot-sixer.
I'm sure I have no additional raised hands.
My daughter is five foot five and she can't walk straight up the stairs.
Oh, wow. Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review on the exterior.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, board.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one two eight eight three one seven sixty-nine Richview Street. This is a remodel of kitchen, first-floor bathroom addition, new rear deck addition. The violation is Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yard is insufficient, and Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Matt is on. Matt, you've, you're muted. Oh, there you go. Okay.
Hi, this is Matt Murphy, twenty-three Emmonsdale Road, West Roxbury.
So is this a one or a two-family?
This is a single-family owner occupied.
Okay, so are you the?
I'm the builder representing Michael Wood.
Okay. So tell us what is, what's being proposed?
Okay, this is part of a renovation project geared towards making the home a little more accommodating to age and place. We'd like to widen, widen the side stairs from three feet to four feet to in preparation for a future ramp if needed. We'd like to add a first-floor bathroom. A barrier-free shower if mobility becomes an issue. A rear deck, small rear deck, about eight and a half by nine and a half feet. That could create some private outdoor space if we have to put a first-floor bedroom in and live live on the first floor, and it's, Michael's a longtime resident and he's just, he loves neighborhood.
Just a couple of questions. So that, that proposed stairway, is there, is that, is that often, often existing driveway? And how many cars you have in that driveway?
There's one car in the driveway. You could fit two tandem, but there's one car in the driveway. It's going to replace an existing stair about the same size. It's, the stair we're replacing is about thirty-two inches wide. We'd like to make this forty-eight inches.
Oh, got it. Okay, cool. And I see that rear deck. How are the plans, Ms. Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
And is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the mayor's office and neighborhood services. Our office hosted in a butters meeting on February ninth, and there are no concerns in the community. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board.
And I do have a raised hand, Sheik.
Hello.
Hi, you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Rashik Glenn, eleven Richview Street. So we're neighbors.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to speak in support. It's a great neighborhood, and I too see myself aging in place, so I'm just here to speak in support for the matter.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a motion forward of approval.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one two nine five four zero one nineteen to twenty-one Cheverus Road. This is to add two non-required parking spaces located entirely in the side yard in tandem configuration for an existing two-family. The violation is Article ten, section one, a limitation of parking area. The proposed parking is within five feet of the side lot line. Article sixty-five, section forty-two point seven. Side yard, narrow lot, no side yard in which there is a driveway provided access to off-street parking or off-street loading facilities required by this article should not be less than ten feet wide. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Attorney Patrick Mahoney with the business address of one sixty Federal Street. I'm here representing tonight owner occupant Doug Shaheen. Mr. Shaheen purchased the two-family property in nineteen eighty-five, at which time there was a, there was no curb and they were using a paved driveway in the area, and sometime in the late eighties, the city had recurbed Cheverus Road for the first hundred yards up from the corner of Dorchester Ave. And at that time, he didn't feel it was necessary to have a curb cut because parking wasn't a concern. Currently, today, Mr. Shaheen, with the development in the area, Mrs. Shaheen reached out to us at Boston Zoning to put the curb cut, apply for a curb cut, street opening permit to go back so he could have the parking on the side of his home again.
So, so Counselor, have you seen the BPDA's recommendation?
We have not.
It's essentially straight denial. It basically talks about the limitation of the area. It would eliminate the side yard. It would eliminate a publicly accessible street parking spot and interrupt the public sidewalk. You know, I so the question for you on behalf of your client is whether you want to take a deferral and see if there's a way of working this out? Or would you like to proceed?
Madam Chair, secretary here. I don't know if Mr. D'Amico's on, but he did speak on this. I'd like to put his comments in for the record.
Yes, please.
Okay, this is from Bob D'Amico of B T D. In his opinion, the request should be denied due to the lack of space for the vehicle in the rear of the plan and that the vehicle, the vehicle closest to the curb cut would also result in front yard parking. Also, B T D does not support one vehicle for one curb cut since this would result in private parking. There was parking on both sides of Cheverus Road.
Okay.
Okay.
So we can proceed. If you'd like to put anything on the record.
Yes, Madam Chair, so the plan essentially speaks for itself, and with the BPDA recommendation, you know, we appreciate that. We would like to proceed. Specifically because the side yard requirement here is ten feet. What's proposed is eight feet to the edge of the roof line, which is about nine inches further. So we would have one space that would comply with what would be considered a, a reduced space at seven feet by eight, seven feet by eighteen feet. And also, Dorchester Article sixty-five is one of two zoning subdistricts in Boston where tandem parking is allowed.
So let me just ask you a question. I look at the parking over here and I see that, you know, if I call space one, the one closest to the street and space two, the one closest to the rear yard. Is that, what is the distance between the bump out of the building and the side property line? Yeah, go ahead.
The bump, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was trying to answer. The bump out from the edge of the roof line is six point seven feet to the property line. The, it's, it's greater than that to the actual side of the building and the foundation itself. So the, the.
Kind to say is that if I look at the plans that are up on the screen, it looks like the building between the two parking spaces, the building pops out and narrows that driveway. And what I want to understand is what's the, 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 the size of that driveway at that narrowest point?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, so in, in two minutes, so what's shown in the plan is eight feet from the edge of the roof to the property line. The roof hangs out approximately nine to ten inches from the building's edge. So it'd be approximately eight feet, ten inches in the front and approximately seven feet, five inches in the narrowest point. And it's worth noting that in Dorchester, the minimum parking space per the zoning code is seven feet by eighteen feet. So it does, would meet the minimum size, even the narrowest point would meet the minimum size from the drivable area.
So I think my question is, at the narrowest point, will a car be able to get to space number two?
Yes. Yes is the answer, and, and not only Mr. Shaheen was able to do so when he first purchased the home, and, and the zoning subdistrict then was before Article sixty-five took effect. And when the, the city closed the curb at that area due to construction in the area, they closed, there was a curb cut there that he was using. And he, they paved and curbed that first hundred yards in from Dorchester Ave with the reconstruction back in late, the late eighties, a few years after he purchased the property. So he was using it for a period of time.
Yes, okay.
And, and his car currently fits today. He drives a Toyota Corolla, but as we know, you know, relief goes within the property, not with the current occupant. But I guess all, all of that to say, with the minimum space required for Article sixty-five, Dorchester's zoning subdistrict would fit both spaces and the area in between, and there would be no front yard parking.
Okay. Okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the mayor's office and neighborhood services. Many butters wrote letters in support of the proposal in order to free up more parking on the streets. And the Saint Marks Association also wrote a lot of support as the applicants have been great neighbors over the years. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have letters, one letter with fifteen names on it in support and four letters of support.
Madam Chair, I do have some raised hands here. Let's start with John Finley. Just sent a request to unmute you. Once unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So my name is John Finley, one fifty-four Center Street. I'm the head of the Epiphany School. And don't see that, I don't know how to put my cam, my, my camera on, but anyway, I Doug Shaheen's been a terrific, fantastic member of the community, super involved. And I sympathize with, you know, the building that's been going on and parking has gotten increasingly difficult. And I think I, all of us at Epiphany are fully in support of this proposal.
Thank you. Thank you. Judith?
Yes, Judith Basky. I am a resident of nineteen Cheverus Road.
Oh, Judith, you sound a little choppy. Can, can you speak up? I can't hear you.
For additional parking on the side of the building. For additional parking on the side of the building because parking on the street is becoming more and more difficult. So I believe that it shouldn't be a problem to park on the side of the house.
Thank you. Um, Miss Ambassador, um, uh, anybody else?
Oh, no ma'am, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, nope, oh, sorry, raise, hand is coming up and down. Uh, Doug and Gemma, if you are looking to give testimony here, y'all, they may be all set, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so given the, the planning perspective from the BPDA and the technical perspective from the uh, Boston Transportation Department, um, I uh, you know, I think um, we should have that um, advise us in our decision-making. So may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I also had concerns with the opening of the car doors. Um, so I'm going to put forward a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so the um, the proposal has been denied. Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-three-zero-one-two-nine-three-six-zero-nine, Adam Street. This is to remove the existing one-story, seven-foot by twenty-two-foot addition, including brick and stone frost wall and replace with a reinforced concrete foundation. New exterior walls and structural support being added second floor to the new addition for bathroom and access for master bedroom. The violation's Article sixty-five, Section nine. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive and Article sixty-five, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Gabriella is on, let me.
Hi, I'm on. Um, Pat, Pat Fisher will be speaking.
Okay.
I'm doing the presentation.
Unmute. Okay, Pat, you're unmuted.
Pat, if you're going to speak, you might need to unmute yourself.
Her, her hand is raised, yeah.
The panelist, so she, I did send a request to unmute her. Um, let me try it again, but she should be able to unmute herself unless she's having issues. She might be having issues. Um, Gabriella, did you just want to speak on this or till we figure out what's going on?
Sure, we can do this. I'm, I'm Mike Salamondo. I'm, I'm Gabriella's dad. And uh, I'll be the contractor on there. We've, um-
Exactly what you're planning on doing so we can understand it.
Sure.
Oh, Pat's, Pat's here.
Oh, Pat's here now.
Unmute.
Oh, she's on the cell, so please unmute yourself on the cell, Pat. Um, you need to, if you're on the cell, you need to press star six to unmute yourself, okay? Is that better?
We can hear you now, Pat. Yeah.
All right, sorry. We, we use
I think we're hearing you on both mics, the phone mic and the computer mic.
All right, can you hear me now? Yeah, sorry, we, we use computers that have uh, the AutoCAD software and we're not able to use them. Sorry about the confusion.
So tell us what's being proposed.
Sometimes staying unmuted. We can.
Sorry for the confusion here.
And the drawings will be seen on the other. Six oh nine Adam Street is owned by Michael and Gabriella Salamondo. Uh, Michael Salamondo was renovating this house for his daughter. Yes, uh, Gabriella uh, will be living in this house. Uh, she works from home. Uh, she is a um, project engineer for a large technology firm uh, local to the Boston area.
Is, first of all, is, is this a one-family dwelling?
Yes, this is a one-family dwelling.
Okay.
It's in a two F five thousand.
Okay, so that, that, that helps bring clarity. Uh, so tell us, is there I, I think I, we, the description is a little bit hard for us to understand. So tell us if there is, what, what the proposed additions are and tell us which plans to go to that are up on the screen that will most uh, most likely tell the story.
Are they moving the screen or wait? Oh, they are, okay. Um. Let's see. Drawing A, three.
Okay.
All right, so uh, the existing um, house has a front porch that was converted at some point in time in the past. Uh, it's a one-story front porch. We're removing that because we cannot put a second-story addition on it. Uh, when we put the footprint, uh, the, the front porch footprint back in, we would like to infill the areas that are in the hatch, not the, not the crosshatch, just a straight hatch. And basically what we'll do is we'll square off the front of the house.
Okay.
Uh, on the very front of the house.
Sorry, sorry, let me ask you, how many square, square feet in that, is that in total?
Um, all of the, the hatched areas?
Yep.
Um.
Altogether, six sixty-four, okay, thank you. Miss um, Miss Better, how are the plans?
Plans are adequate.
Yes, um, okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition on this project?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted in a Butters meeting on February ninth. A Butters were in support. Indy Saint Marks Area Civic Association also issued a letter of support. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have that letter from the Saint Marks Association.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Thank you.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review on the exterior.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-two-four-five-zero-one-zero, twelve-twenty-four Morton Street. This is to move the kitchen from the right side of the home and extend the front wide, front wide and forward to make it larger. Also to raise the roof on the second level with roof deck and sliding doors. The violation's Article sixty-five, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Tyrone Smith, as well as my wife, BB Mercer Smith of twelve-twenty-four Morton Street. We submitted the proposed plan, uh, had a community meeting as well. Uh, the violations were, I, I, in, in reference to the s- the side yard and rear yard as he just stated.
So, hold on, Mr. Smith, um, can you tell us which plans we should look at so we can clearly understand what you're proposing to do?
Correct, ma'am. Sorry, because I did commit, because we had, yes, yes, because I had the plans ch- changed, uh, do mainly due for one, the violation as well as uh, the initial uh, change of the expansion, we realized. So that's the front of the new uh, proposed plan with the expansion uh, roughly total of thirteen feet from the existing now to the new plan that you have before you is thirteen feet out as well as nineteen feet, thirteen by nineteen feet. We initially expanded the nineteen feet to the rear of the uh, house equal level with the red house and we learned that that was in violation through the architect. So we scaled back to nineteen feet. So now the initial proposed plan before you is nineteen feet wide by thirteen feet.
Okay, has this address come before this, the board before?
I, uh, you mean, w- we, we had the Butters meeting.
No, but, but has the Board of Appeal looked at twelve-twenty-four Morton before?
We're rookies, this is our first time, so I'm, I'm, ma'am.
Okay, and um, okay, we see the roof deck. How are the plans, Ms. Better?
Madam Chair, the plan, the plans are adequate. I do have a question regarding the, the existing basement. Uh, and the proposal has it at the ceiling height of six foot seven. And you should have, so I wanted to know if it's existing, if there's doing any kind of renovation because um, it says proposed basement, but you can see has a height of six foot seven, which is not adequate. So I just wanted an explanation for that.
Yeah, we're not doing anything to the basement. Uh, good catch. Um, perhaps that's an error or what page you're on, because
Okay, so that's existing.
Yes, he's not doing anything to the basement. Uh, this is all, um, initially interior as well as going exterior.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Better?
No, other than that, the plans are adequate.
Okay, anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Um, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dante Peoples here, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, the applicant had a Butters meeting run by ONS on February third, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, sorry. Um, and where support was shown by Butters. And then also there was a neighborhood association meeting with the Lower Mill Civic Association on February fifteenth where the association gave verbal support, but I don't believe they, they were able to put in a uh, letter. But um, like I said, both support at the Butters meeting and at the um, association. So at this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment, the judgment of, of the board on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do have a raised hand, um, um, under neighbor. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, uh, hopefully you can hear me.
Yep.
Okay, Shmaine Benford, eleven oh seven Washington Street.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, I just, uh, would like to, uh, speak in favor, uh, of these, uh, recommended alterations um, to the Smith family home. They've been longstanding members of the community. Um, I do believe that these quality life improvements will further anchor uh, his, in his family's commitment, uh, to this community, uh, in anchoring them to a larger extended family that also exists, uh, in the area. Uh, Mr. Smith and his family
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, because you're having
In a number of different areas with snow plowing, um, and other, other
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Ambassador, anybody else?
I have no additional raised hands at the moment, thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review and without a building co-vocation.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with those provisos. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-two-eight-nine-seven-three-three-thirty-eight Wellesley Park. This increased living area renovation of an unfinished space or par- on partially finished third floor. No structural or exterior changes. The violation's Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building has excessive stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Paul LaSoto, thirty-eight Wellesley Park.
So please tell us what you're proposing to do.
So we have an existing single-family home in Wellesley Park. Uh, my wife and I, uh, lived here about ten years. The, what would be considered the uh, third story, which is uh, colloquially would call an attic, has two finished uh, rooms and then one unfinished gable. Uh, we're proposing-
Okay, can you tell us, please, which uh, page is the best one to look at? To understand what you're proposing to do?
So it would be best to look at the, you're looking at existing conditions because we had to document that for the floor area ratio. Uh, we go to the end. And there should be a proposed uh, plan. So right here, that was actually a good plan to look at, the first one. Go back one page, please. This is existing conditions on our uh, third floor, shall we call it. You have the office, the bedroom, and then what would be classed as unfinished storage. Off to the lower right, you have a staircase coming up from the second floor. If we go to the next page, you can see, uh, we'd like to finish off that unfinished storage space. Put in a bathroom above the uh, other bath on the second floor and just finish it off. Put uh, proper heating and cooling up there with the heat pumps.
So tell us in office one, in office one and office two and in the basement and in the bedroom, excuse me, what is the floor to ceiling height?
Uh, she did not indicate, the architect did not indicate it, but we, we have full ceiling height there of at least eight feet.
Okay. How are the plans, Ms. Better?
The plans are adequate.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted in a Butters meeting for the proposal on February fifteenth. A Butters in the Melville Park Neighborhood Association, uh, were in full support. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm trying to have no raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of, um, approval with BPDA Design Review, paying special attention to the dormers and exterior.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck with that proviso, so good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-two-five-eight-zero-three-two-nineteen Webster Street. This is a change of occupancy from a one-family to a two-family. The violation is Article sixty-nine, Section nine. The lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article sixty-nine, Section nine, usable open space requirements insufficient. And Article eighty, Section eighty E dash two, application of a small project review. Name and address for the record, please.
Natalie Fontinas, nineteen Webster Street.
So tell us what you're proposing to do.
So my proposal is to convert a single-family dwelling into two.
Okay, and tell us how, um, you're proposing to do that?
So the um, building has been vacant for quite some time and each unit will have two separate, um, means of egress. And there will be a second, so there's two, one first-floor unit and the second-floor unit will be a combination of the second floor and the third floor.
Okay, so it looks like what we're looking at right now is the first floor. It has two bedrooms. What's, what's the total square footage?
Uh, the, I believe that roughly the total square footage for the first floor is roughly twelve, twelve fifty.
And the second?
Is fifteen, just under seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred. Um, and what's the floor to ceiling height in the attic?
The floor to ceiling height in the attic, I think we're about nine feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, uh, let's see, okay. And um, which unit do you uh, occupy?
I would be occupying the first floor.
Okay, how are the plans, Ms. Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate. I just, I have a question. Is there any, um, exterior on the elevation, any modifications, or is it purely interior with the additions of entry to allow for the second unit? Entry to allow for the second unit to exist?
So the footprint of the property is not changing in any way, shape or form. The only thing that's going to be added will be the second floor egress, and that would be a deck on the side. Um, that doesn't necessarily affect, or it's not an extension, it's an exterior deck. As a second form of egress.
Thanks.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Secretary, I just wanted to ask Ms. Fontanis, you've got, are you currently working on this building on a separate permit?
Yes, so right now there's no work being done. Um, I'm in the process of hiring another contractor. And uh, you know, solidifying who's gonna complete the work.
Is it, had the, had the changes started without uh, proper permits? Is that what it, what, what it was?
No, so uh, originally I had a contractor, um. Because of COVID, a lot of things got abandoned, left unfinished. So I'm in the process of finding someone to complete the work.
Okay, so.
A long form was pulled out, a long form uh, permit was pulled in the initiation of the project.
And this is a two F five thousand diff- district. Tell us how many square foot, one me square feet in this parcel?
So if, in the uh, let me just reference my notes here, so. I guess respectfully, I would ask for variance because I am seven hundred and sixty. Uh, square feet shy of what would naturally be requested in Ward eighteen for a multi-unit dwelling. Um, the interior of the house is just under uh, three thousand square feet, but the exterior. We're at seven thousand two hundred and fifty, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and I've done a little bit of research and in the area, there are other two families in Hyde Park.
No, I got, you know, so, um, I guess, um, um, uh, who has the screen? Can you, can you um, expand this photo a little bit, this drawing? Tell us, while this drawing is up, how the uh, parking is proposed to work?
So the parking is proposed, but um, using an easement that was in the back. And I guess, from my understanding, there is an easement. From central lab to behind Webster, um, that has been used during the construction. Um, of the, you know, over the course of the period, I've had the property for two years now. Um, to my knowledge, that easement is available to go in and out of the property.
Okay, okay, uh, is there anything else you want to add? Oh, oh, no, okay. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal? Any comments that you put in the comment section is not in the record. So raise your hands if anybody's interested in speaking, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Danielle Fonseca with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. The community process was completed and then a butters meeting was held on February fifteenth. During this meeting, one of butter did express support for the project, while two other butters that were in attendance raised concerns and confusion. About the legality of the easement, uh, which is the driveway where twenty-one and twenty-three Webster Street currently park. And how this being proposed as an entry point for nineteen Webster Street would impact them. Following the meeting, the applicant was instructed to connect with the concerned neighbors to provide clarification on that easement. As well as provide plans for the project to a butters. Um, we have three letters of opposition for this proposal, and they have been sent to the board for review. At this time, we would like to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have seven letters of opposition, no support.
Thank you.
And I'll start uh, with Beth for the testimony. You've been unmuting. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Is this for me? Yes, hi, yes. Um, my name is Beth Burlingame and I live at twenty-one Webster Street. And my understanding, we, we only allowed um, for o- opening up of the fence. Um, to allow the dumpsters to go in and out, not for um, uh. Um, acknowledging that there would be any ongoing uh, access only. Uh, we agreed to it only to allow the, to be kindly as a neighbor to allow the. Um, uh, for the dumpsters to go back and forth, and it would affect our, our parking. We have two. Um, uh, parking spots as does our condo association neighbors. And there's no way that cars could go through there and we would still have our off um, street parking, which was part of. What our understanding um, is. And we have, we have a deed that suggests that there's no easement.
Ms. Fontanis, uh, we just need to hear from everybody and then we'll give you a chance to respond, okay? In the meantime, any more raised hands, Ms. Ambassador?
Yep, Katani Sumner, go ahead.
I don't see myself on the screen. Can you, you don't want to see my face? So.
And you, you go ahead.
Okay, uh, my husband and I live at twenty-three Webster Street. And we were not even aware that, the request was not made to both of the condo association members about taking down the fence. We would not have agreed to it. And so it was just, it's really not handled well. And we've lived in that, we've lived in our home for eleven years now. And we spoke to the person who built the home um, and sold it to us, and he said he has no record of any easement ever being there. Um, so yeah, we're concerned about parking and the neighborhood is very much a single-family primarily area. And um, we're concerned and oppose it as changing um. Even the parking situation. The house is next to ours. We're on the corner and they will be next to ours, which would create a, an issue with parking closer to the corner and. Traffic congestion and it's just not set up for two families. It's not that big and there's no yard if she takes it away for parking, which is not possible.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, are you, Chris, is that your husband? I know his hand was raised.
That's my husband, yeah. We got bumped, yeah, he would like to speak to, I'm sure.
Okay, just want to make sure in the right place for testimony. All right, and then Valerie, um, yep, the center request unmute you. Uh, once you're unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi Valerie? Okay, I think she might be all set. I don't see her hand raised anymore. Um, and that's all we have for raised hands, Madam Chair. Thank you.
My husband's hand was up. He can't speak.
I, I think you spoke very eloquently on his behalf, too. You're good, thank you. Um, and he's so, let's see, uh, Ms. Fontanis. Oh, well, there's one more hand raised, Ms. Brown, go ahead.
Can you hear us, Ms. Brown? I don't know if we're having connectivity issues, but I tried to unmute you. Ms. Brown, can you hear us? Okay, yeah, not, we're not hearing anything as I, I'm not sure what's going on with her connectivity. Yeah, I am not sure what's going on with that. Her hand is raised, but I can't, we can't hear her.
Okay, Ms. Fontanis, would you want to give us a quick um, a quick response?
Yes, absolutely. Um, so the easement, I only found out about it because I went to the registry of deeds. And I did the research for um, that area, that property, and it was set forth in nineteen eighteen, to be exact. And it was originally used for horse uh, and carriage to be drawn. Items into the back from Central Street of Webster Street. Um, so I was informed about. Forty-five minutes before this meeting by one of my neighbors that. The legality that she shared with me about the easement. So it's, it existed, to my knowledge, it was. Something that I could use. We used it during the construction to move dumpsters in and out. And it doesn't interfere with their parking. It may not necessarily be the most comfortable, but I'm in. You know, per the easement, it's eight feet from central to the back of Webster.
So you know what I think, Ms. Fontanis? Is that there seems to be, we, we see this fairly frequently. That, that there needs to be more work between you and your neighbors. You may want to hire some um, somebody to help you with the legal front so that you know exactly what your access issues are. Okay?
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So my other, my other um, concern here that is if, if I don't use the easement. I'm still within the amount of space required to have a two-family dwelling.
So, 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 let me just say this to you. That your violations may change if the, if the easement is not in play. And when we see a project, we need to see it pretty well baked. As far as all the, you know, information that we need in place to make a land use decision. And, and I feel from my perspective, there are a few um, pieces that are dangling out there. Okay, so may I have a motion for denial without prejudice, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice.
I will second that motion.
I too am in support. So this gives you a chance to go back, really hire the kinds of uh, technical support that you need. And talk to your neighbors so this can mature in, in a positive way.
What are the next steps? Because this is not a project I've had for over two years.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Can you talk to Tom? Um, once you get Tom, will you talk to uh, Ms. Fontanis, please? Um, so that she can figure out her next steps, okay? Thank you.
Madam Chair, we'll reach out after uh, tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, so he'll reach out to you.
Okay.
Calling the next case, calling B O A one two eight two eight nine eight eighty, Paudra Street. This is a renovation of first unit in conversion from a single-family to a two-family residence. Demo the interior and roof and rebuild with an addition. The violation is Article sixty-nine, section nine, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article sixty-nine, section nine, the side yard is insufficient, and Article sixty-nine, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, um, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Marco Severino, representing Ms. Gladys. Um, uh, Freyas for this project. Um, Ms. Gladys Freyas have been part of the uh, the community for many years and have served. Um, and she had lived in, in this house for many years and have a son that would like to um. Have him be part of, of, of that building, which is the reason why she wanted it to convert it to a two-family. Uh, we went uh, in front of the, of the uh, a butters meeting and um, everybody was in.
So, so, Mr. Severino, please tell us exactly what's being proposed?
Yes, so we are proposing the testing house currently, um, the setbacks um, fall.
You, you just got muted.
Yes, yeah, I know, I noticed that. Um, so the testing house fall with uh, within the, the side and, and rear. The setbacks fall into, into the testing structure. Um, so by adding a second floor. Um, it, it buys basically triggers um, the non-conformity on, on those two sides. Um, so we're basically following the same footprint of the testing structure. Um, and, and basically adding a, a front porch uh, as a, a very appeal of the, of the building.
Okay, so tell us what the size of the first unit would be on the, on the bottom floor?
Yes.
The size of the second unit?
Yes, so the first unit, I actually did the math because I noticed, Madam Chair, you, you were asking the questions. The first unit would be uh, seventeen hundred seventy-six square feet, and the second unit will be sixteen hundred square feet.
Okay, and is there occ- any occupancy proposed for the basement?
Uh, yes, she's currently um, will be using as a uh, gym area. And I believe a one-bedroom that has a egress window um, access as a, the call requires.
Okay, and what's the floor to ceiling height in there?
Eight feet.
And the, in the basement?
In the basement, I believe it is, let me see the floor plans, because I don't have access to it from there. Uh, I know the first, second and attic space will be eight feet. The basement, based on my elevation, will be. I believe it will be seven feet, ten inches, but I don't have it in my elevations currently, Madam Chair.
Okay, and tell us about that bedroom, that what's the floor to cell height in the bedroom?
It will be seven feet, ten inches, Madam Chair.
No, I'm saying floor to the window sill. What is?
Oh.
The distance?
Oh, yeah, right now the detail is shown as forty-four inches uh, maximum.
Okay, and what's the floor to ceiling height in the attic?
In the attic is eight feet, Madam Chair.
How are the plants miss better?
Adam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Um, Ms. Better, are the utilities separate? I'm having a hard time, um, and there's a lot of go- going on here.
Yeah, I. The utilities, well, let's ask the architect, are utilities?
Yeah, they, they, they are separate. The first floor uh, unit. Yeah, so the first floor unit, it's on the, on the base, I believe it's in the basement. Let me see if I.
Yeah, there, there's one in the basement at the rear.
Yeah.
That's, that's for the first unit, correct?
Yep, yeah, and then the attic is supplying the second floor.
Okay, and then tell us about that circular stairwell?
Yeah, so that, that's, that was actually a request from a Madam um, Gladys Freyas. Uh, she actually had that, that law for, for that look, aesthetic look. Um, and um, she actually wanted it to be able to access that space there on, on the attic. So which is the reason why we incorporated it into the design.
Oh, I see, okay. Um, yeah, so the plans are adequate, Ms. Better, right?
Yes.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Danielle Fonseca, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for forty-eight, or excuse me, for eighty Paudra Street, completed the community process within a butters meeting that I hosted, and this was on February seventeenth. Uh, they received full support from neighbors. Um, Ms. Gladys also presented the proposal to the Bellnell Family Neighborhood Association. Which she is also an active member on their association's board. Um, and she received full support in a letter of support which has been sent to the board. At this time, we wish to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, Jordan Freyas here from Councilor Ricardo Roy's office. We want to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have three letters of support.
Okay, I do have a raised hand. And Helena, I sent a request to unmute you. Once unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you. Helena Tong, twenty Friendship Road, Hyde Park. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to offer approval support as a resident and president of Bellnell Family Neighborhood Association. Excuse me, for Mrs. Freyas's project. Mrs. Freyas is a longstanding resident of our community and a board member of our association. And her project proposes no direct impact to Director Butters or the community, and we wish her success with her proj- her project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, no additional raised hands at the moment.
Uh, Jordan, are you still on?
Yes, I'm still here.
Jo- Jordan, are you related to the applicant?
Oh, sorry about that. No, actually, Ms. Gladys Freyas and I are not related at all.
Wanted to make sure, okay?
Yeah, no problem. Sorry about that.
No worries, is uh, so I'm ready for a motion. May I have a motion, please?
Madam, Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with um, B P D A design review. To pay special attention to the spiral stairway, the exterior material, and also the size of the dormer.
Okay, so it's the stairway, um, the dormer and what else? I'm sorry?
And exterior material.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with those provisos. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling B O A. One two eight eight nine eight nine one sixty Austin Street. This is to add a second floor addition, which includes a cantilever one foot over two long sides of the current residence, overhanging deck. On the backside of twenty-three by five, long and two by, two by one wide. And squaring off the corner of the front left side of the house to add an additional living space corner approximately the size of five by two. The violation is Article sixty-nine, section nine, the front yard is insufficient, Article sixty-nine, section nine, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Believe it's Mr. Power. I see his name up there.
Okay, Mr. Power, power. Power, wait one second. David uh, sent a request to unmute you. Once unmuted, can you? Let's see. Hey, David, can you hear us? I know we're having some issues with them earlier, trying to make them a panelist, say.
Can you come here, okay now?
Oh, yeah, okay, David and Giselle, yes, okay, go ahead.
That is one sixty Austin Street, Hyde Park, Massachusetts, zero two, one three six. And my name is Giselle, and David is unfortunately on an emergency call for business.
Okay, so please describe to us what you're planning on doing.
We would like to add a second addition to add to our living space. The second floor would include a bedroom, a large master bedroom, a small bedroom. And a master bathroom, and as well a balcony.
Okay, um, and so your your violations, your two simple violations appear to be. Um, the one I'm I think I'm concerned about is the side yard. Um, what is your your side yard from the building line to your property line and what's required by code?
I believe it is five feet right now, and I believe the code says ten feet. We are very friendly with our neighbor. So we have the support of every single one of them. Currently, between our house and the fence, there is a vegetable garden.
Okay, but and so between the wall of your building and the wall of your butters building, what's the distance between between?
It is five and a half feet.
So if so, it's no, it's got to be more between, so it's between your wall and the neighbor's wall? Yeah.
So from our house to the property line, it's between five and seven feet. I'm sorry, I don't have that handy.
I'm just trying to figure out how close they are to the property line. Um, because just because we need to protect their rights too in some ways.
Are you changing? Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask, are you changing the footprint at all? I know that you're you're I know that you're going up, but are you changing the footprint?
The footprint of the actual house is not being changed.
Okay.
We are hoping to add a cantilever on the second floor on the both long sides on each side.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Ms. Better?
Madam Chair, the plans are fine. The one drawing that we need that is missing is a survey plan.
We do have that, and I did submit that as well. I submitted, um, a. The way it is right now and a proposed plot plan as well. The only thing we really are changing is if you're looking at the picture where it's up on the screen right now. If you're looking at the middle graph. On the left-hand side, where is this actually perfect like that? There is a blue line where it says eleven and seven eight. You see that blue line? That little corner, we are hoping to square off.
Okay. And was this in the plans when you submitted them to ISD to begin with?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. Um, so, um, Ms. Better, are you comfortable with the plans besides?
Correct, drawings are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Danielle Fonseca of Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicants did complete the community process, and I hosted in a butters meeting that was held on February twenty-third. Um, they did receive um support from one of the butters that was on the meeting for not only. Them as neighbors, but for the proposal itself. Uh, our office has not directly received any letters of support or opposition from this proposal. Um, we'd like to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have one support letter.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with B P D A Design Review on the exterior. And also to for the applicant to ensure that a plot plan was submitted.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that proviso. Um, and if you could please forward a plot plan, um, just just for insurance purposes, okay?
How can I do that if I'm a ass?
Madam Chair, this is this is Tom. Uh, look at ISD's file on this one, and they do have a plot plan submitted for twenty-six Hawthorne. I sent it I sent it to Ms. Barazza.
Great, thank you.
Okay, excellent, and this is two.
No, this is one sixty Austin.
One sixty Austin.
Oh, well, let me let me double check that one. I apologize, I was looking at the wrong address.
You're jumping ahead a bit, huh?
Yeah, apparently, I'm sorry.
I can also drop this off tomorrow. I mean, I know it was submitted as the plans, but.
Yeah, I mean, if we have it, then everything's good.
I can bring it by tomorrow, more than happy to.
Okay.
And thank you, Madam Chair and the board.
Thank you.
And everything as well. Thank you to Danielle. Thank you.
So hold on one minute, um, let's just make sure Tom, uh, or Tom can give you a buzz if we need it, okay? Let's leave it at that. Okay, thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one two eight three two six five twenty-six Hawthorne Street. This is to create a two-room office space with half-bath and interior of an existing garage. Windows and exterior door are pre-existing, and this is accessory office use. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section eight, accessory office use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Marion Semino, and I'm at twenty-six Hawthorne Street.
So tell us what's being proposed?
The proposal is to take part of our existing garage, the rear part, and create a office space there with two rooms. Um, nothing in the exterior building would change.
So is this a single family?
Yes.
And who would use that office?
My husband and I.
And do you park in the garage currently?
We do not. The garage is actually, uh, we can't access it with our vehicles.
I see, okay. Um, and you're not changing anything on it. It's just the interior layout, right?
Exactly. We're planning on replacing the current door with a with a different door, but other than that, it will be exactly the same as it is.
Okay. And do you have customers or visitors coming to your office space?
Um, currently, I do not. I would, in the future, with with COVID safety things, like to in the future have visitors come.
So I I think I think what what we would be concerned about is with your visitors, how would it impact your neighbors? Um, having them, and if you would anticipate any evening or night uses of that space? Of that office space?
I could anticipate some evening use, definitely not night use. Um, and we have a, there's lots of public parking on the street. We also would not be. I would not be having like multiple people come at any time.
So it's basically one-on-one consultation, in other words, okay? Okay, um, how are the plans, Ms. Better?
And Jim, the plans are adequate. I do have a question regarding the garage. If you can't access the garage, what is it being used right now?
It's currently just used as storage.
Okay.
Um, and we have, we let the kids ride their bikes around in there.
Okay, um, given that information, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Uja Noguchi, and I am the Rosendale liaison with the mayor's office. Um, we conducted a neighborhood meeting for this project on, what day was it? In in February, um, a lot of the concerns for neighbors revolved around. Just how this may become a commercial space in the future, potentially. My office did receive one letter of opposition, and we'll defer judgment on this project to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have that one letter, and that was the concern.
And Madam Chair, I do have a raised hand. Bobby, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Robert Mirad, uh, twenty-four Hawthorne Street. Um, I'm the direct neighbor. We have a shared driveway. Um, did have the neighborhood meeting. Um, there were concerns about, uh, the layout and the original drawing. Uh, with, um, a lounge area, it was stated it was just going to be for personal office use at that time. Um, now it seems like we're going into a commercial use, which. Um, would would upset the fabric of this neighborhood. I believe there's a lot of young kids in this neighborhood, and our driveway is a shared driveway. I'd be concerned about that use. So those are my oppositions, and. If the use of the garage is, um, is properly, um. Used for just an office space and not, um, a commercial zoned area in this neighborhood.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Hey, may I respond?
Yeah, please.
So I have been looking into the zoning on this for exactly this question, because when my neighbors raised the concern of an of a commercial space, I wanted to be very clear in what that meant. I was, my understanding is that the previous owners of our property were using the garage to service vehicles, which. Was, I'm assuming disruptive to folks. I have a very small private practice as psychotherapist, and my understanding is that it's completely within zoning under Article ten to be able to have. A private practice from your home.
Yes, it would be from your home, but this is not like in your home. I mean, that's that's what kind of triggers a different, a different kind of review, because it is in your garage. Um, but, um, I don't know what the parking is like on Hawthorne. Is there adequate on-street parking for your visitors?
Yeah, we live very close to Rosendale Village in the train, and many people park on our street for commuters.
So what I'm asking is that if you had a client in, is there, how disruptive would it be to your neighbors to have that person park on the street?
I do not believe that it would be disruptive. We have people who are not in the neighborhood park on the street regularly.
Okay. Um. Hansi, do you know the street?
No, I don't.
Yeah, um, okay, so let's just, um. See, okay, so it's time for a motion. Um, I think one to this petitioner only. Um, for that, um, for that use, um. What are are there any other conditions that might protect the butters on this? Um, I'm Hansi or or, um, Mark?
Yeah, Madam Chair, you know, obviously, I think what happened in the past with an auto repair. Um, you know, things are gonna happen.
Yeah, that's history, yeah.
Right, um, it's tough to gauge, but to your point where it's not actually livable space, it's gonna become an office. You know, I I I'm looking at it, you know, on Google, there there is parking. I really don't know how you'd be able to really set any other parameters to it. I think you hit it, you know, as far as that's concerned.
Okay. Okay, so, um, so a motion. So what do you think? A motion for approval, because the, um, accessory office is a forbidden use. So, um, to to you think to this petitioner only?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to.
And, um, Hansi, is that you?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
I, I'm I'm moving towards not supporting that motion, um, but someone needs to call that motion.
Okay, so what's what's?
There's some of my hesitations is that it's it would it would really be commercial use, and it just sets a precedent. Um, and then what is to, what is not to then provoke that separate structure than being expanded upon? Into other uses in the future, so my my sense is. We have to think of it as a commercial use. Um, because it's not existing in the home. And, um, and so I would lean against that motion, but someone could put that motion forward.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Um, well, only if something is going to, um, clarify what's going on, please just make it short.
I'm curious about if I were to, if I were to see clients in my existing home, would that be problematic?
It would certainly be different, um, if you had it in your home versus in a garage. Uh, where, you know, it sets a whole different other set of things in motion. Uh, because because there is the possibility that, um. And and the fear for neighbors is that that would be expand, the office space would be expanded on in a different way than it would be if it was in your house.
So it's a slow concern.
Let's see, exactly. So, um, Ms. Better, um, why, and and, um, Mr. Fortune, why don't we go ahead? With a motion, because I do think, um, absolutely, there's there's value in the thought of thinking about it. As the creeping in of commercial uses in a residential neighborhood.
I would agree. I mean, it's it's it's, Ms. Barazza wants to make the motion.
Before, up before a motion of denial.
I will second it.
I too am in support, um, so it's been denied. We we look forward to a different application from you, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one two eight one three eight one ninety-nine to one oh one A Franklin Street. This is a roof revisal granted to this owner and occupant only. And change of from a single family without accessory use, mixed use to to a two-family with office accessory use and one retail. The violation is Article fifty-one, section sixteen, two dwelling units is a conditional use in an L C dash five sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Owen Mack, forty-seven Aldi Street in Alston.
Mr. Mack, tell us what's being proposed.
Uh, so I purchased this building from my former neighbor who, uh, resided and worked out of the building, ran his business out of this building. Uh, and was last before the board in ninety-four, I believe it was, ninety-four, maybe ninety-six. Uh, so I purchased this building a year ago from his estate. He sadly passed away, and, uh, I'm trying to, uh. Uh, get a variance to, uh, make the building conform with the way it's actually been used for the last number of years. He built out a. Uh, second rental, uh, unit, residential unit, um, back in twenty-ten. Uh, not permitted, uh, legal, and, uh, otherwise.
Please, no value judgment, just.
Yeah.
And to tell us exactly what's being proposed, okay?
I I'm proposing, I'm proposing to only change the, uh, the occupancy of the space.
Okay, so you're proposing to change the occupancy then to two units, unit one, which is, and and they're both proposed to be purely residential uses? No artist-lived-work or anything like that?
Uh, unit two, I'm, uh, uh, requesting office accessory use. Um, could be our accessory use, but office accessory use, and unit three is a, uh, commercial. Space, uh, art gallery retail, which is allowed by right.
Eight thirty-four and unit three, and how how big and unit three, the commercial space is six fifteen square feet? And that would be, um, commercial use?
Correct.
Okay. And that slop sink, what is that?
Uh, literally a slop sink, stainless steel.
So that that's related to the commercial use or to the residential use?
It's a utility room that is, uh, commonly accessible to both unit three and unit two, as the panel for unit two resides in that room, so that is common area.
Okay, um, and you know, it's been a little while since, um, I was on Franklin. Are these windows floor to, pretty much floor to ceiling windows, or how have they been treated in the meantime?
Uh, there's a commercial building next door that has essentially floor ceiling windows. Um, this building has, uh, now, uh, you can see on the plan, if you go up. Uh, there's a two entrance doors that are just standard commercial doors, maybe thirty-six inch wide. And you can see one, two, uh, three, uh, windows that are. And you can see one, two, uh, three, uh, windows that are, no, not floor-to-ceiling, they're smaller. Done maybe back in the seventies. I want to say they're like five foot by four foot, maybe.
Okay, and did I notice that for unit one, the kitchenettes in the basement?
That is correct.
Okay, are you proposing on maintaining that or bringing it up and making it like a decent, um, unit?
Uh, I am proposing to leave the units as they are. Um, the basement, uh, has been, uh, dug down to increase ceiling height to nearly eight feet. And, uh, yeah, my proposal is to essentially leave the building as is. I'm just trying to get approval for the way it has been essentially broken up for the last ten or twelve years.
And, um, um, now, can, I don't know who's running the screen today. Uh, can you go to the next page and show us what's happening in the basement?
Well, so this, these drawings are essentially existing conditions. So I'm not making a proposal at this point to modify the building. Uh, what's happening right now is, uh, unit one has its own, uh, you know, basement, that kitchenette, furnace laundry back there. And, uh, uh, unit, uh, there, there's a storage area essentially underneath the other two that, um, will need, uh, in the future, uh, a stairwell. But at the moment, the access to the entire basement is through unit one, and in fact, the entire basement is rented to the, rented, it's been rented back to the former owners. So it's a little bit in process.
No, so, so let me get some clarity. So, eh, so, unit one has access to the entire basement, then?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there a plan then to, to, at some point, um, provide individual access to the basement to unit two?
Uh, in the future, I would like to do that, but, uh, as I mentioned, I purchased the building about a year ago. It is still full of the previous owner's materials. Uh, his grandson is living in unit one, and, uh, I am, uh, have been just doing a lot of preventive maintenance to bring the building, uh, to stop all the leaks, et cetera, et cetera. So in the long term, uh, longer term, hopefully in the next year or two, uh, the basement will be cleared of personal effects of previous owner, and I can go before the board again and, uh, set this up properly.
Just know, in the event that you plan, anything else, that it looks like the basement might be entirely underground? That this board is not, uh, does not look kindly at, uh, basement living. So just for your future reference, how are the plans miss better?
Answer, um, okay.
Okay, I know, I, uh, there's a, a bit of me that feels a bit uncomfortable, but got it. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process. The applicant went before the Alston Civic Association, received strong support. Um, you know, as, as the ACA's letter, uh, you know, reports, this property has been kind of unique on Franklin Street for an extended period of time, and they were excited that, you know, someone's taking ownership of this building and making the improved maintenance, um, on the parts that need to be improved upon. Uh, the applicant also circulated the flyer and received, uh, a number of letters of support from the Butters, also expressing strong support, and those were forwarded to the board. You guys should have those on record.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, Tom, may I ask? Yeah, Tom, may I ask you a question in the meantime, um, to look at what the proviso was, if you can? Because I vaguely remember this project, but I don't remember the details of it.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Around.
I did look at the decisions for nineteen ninety-four. Um, the proviso was relief to this applicant only with respect to the art studio, and then, uh, BPDA Design Review. It was B.R.A. Design Review at the time, but.
Yep, yep, okay. Okay, 'cause, and then nineteen ninety, okay, okay.
You, you might have been here, Madam Chair.
I was sadly, I mean, encouragingly, I was there at that time.
Madam Chair, we do have seven letters of support as well.
Yep, um, probably, probably wrote the BPDA decision on it, too. Um, so, okay, anybody else to speak on this? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck. Um, and if we see you, hopefully there's no occupancy, living space in the basement, okay?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I got to go back to a case I called earlier, case BOA one-two-nine-nine-two-nine-seven-one-forty-nine-H Street. Is H Street on? Is there?
Let them sign in. It's just two of us. Is it James and Martha?
It's, uh, Kenneth, Kenneth Woods or somebody representing. One-forty-nine-H Street. Well, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice. It's now six-thirty-six.
I second.
I too am in support, so, um, it's been denied without prejudice. Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you. Enjoy, enjoy school vacation week, and we'll see you the week after.
Happy Easter to you all.